Welcome to City Council's Special Budget Work Session, Tuesday, April 12, 2022. We'll begin with the roll call.
Councilmember Babcock.
Present.
Councilmember Brookover.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg.
Here.
Mayor Bacon.
Present. I'll look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Communication from council? Councilperson Brookover?
No, thank you, sir.
Councilperson Bamcock?
No, thank you.
Councilperson Watson?
No, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg?
I'm good, thanks.
Pass. Up first, item 4.1, Discussion of Fiscal Year 2023 Preliminary Budget with Emphasis on Specific Divisions Within the General Fund.
So I could just, I could just start off briefly. Appreciate everyone's time and being here. Tonight, we're planning on continuing with the general fund for the second day. We have Mr. Farinbach going to do a presentation on planning, building, and development, and then Nicole McPherson will be talking about the general fund portions of the Public Works Department and obviously be able to answer questions. We also have some other directors here if there's questions that we can answer. And then finally, Kristin Shelley will do a presentation on the library fund as well. So that's the planned presentations we have, and of course, as usual, we're available for any questions on any topic that council may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to begin his presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lahanas. My name is Tom Farinbach. I'm the Planning, Building, and Development Director for the city. We are a, oh, you need me to get a little closer? Okay, sorry about that. I actually thought it was too loud, so. We are a staff of about forty people. That includes both full and part-time across five divisions, which include planning and zoning, building and code, community and economic development, housing and university relations, which are the four that we'll mainly talk about tonight because they're mainly related to the general fund, and then also parking, which we will get into in depth next week at your April 19 session. Essentially, when I think of our department from a high level, I think about us as really driving forward the community development, building community from the concepts all the way through occupancy and beyond. And so, really, you can't really think about one division without its connection to other divisions, other departments at the city, as well as the community generally. In a lot of ways, we reflect the community's desires to move forward. So there's a lot of interconnections and there's a lot of partnerships, both within our divisions, across our divisions, with other divisions and departments at the city, with community organizations and businesses, and ultimately with individuals as well. And you'll see, as you look across really the five divisions that we have in PBD, there are some similar themes to some of our work. One notable theme would be supporting the work of boards and commissions. There are multiple boards and commissions that we serve throughout our department, and we're proud to help them move forward their work and help queue up that work for them. So, planning and zoning, for instance, they host the planning commission, the historic district commissions, and the zoning board of appeals. The Community and Economic Development Group staff the downtown development authority, the Brownfield redevelopment authority, the Economic Development Corporation, the local development financing authority, and the downtown management board. Housing and building respectively have a housing commission and a building board of appeals. We also support multiple boards, commissions, task forces, committees, et cetera, on a broad range of topics and issues throughout the city, and that really is one of the main thrusts of our work. Another key theme would be citizen and business consultation. This, again, takes many varieties, but it's mainly related, I would say, to the various processes that we as a department manage, ultimately to help people get things done, make investments, and build the future in this community, but to do it in a way that's compliant with the code and to make sure that our processes are as fair and equitable as possible. So some examples of this are in housing. A lot of the focus of our work is on rental licensing. So we have a program where we visit each rental property every thirteen months so that we see it at different times of the year, and we issue the initial licenses and then an annual license based on inspections. Similarly, in building, we have building and trades inspectors who will review plans and then inspect them as they're built to ensure that they're compliant, and that crosses multiple trades, including mechanical, electrical, plumbing, building. In our planning and zoning division, we deal a lot with the use of land and the entitlements for the use of property. So a lot of our work you will see because it raises the level of a special use permit or site plan reviews or rezonings or lot splits and combinations. And then there's a lot of tasks that you've given us the authority to administratively approve under certain circumstances. And so a lot of that wouldn't be seen necessarily by the council's purview, but it continues nevertheless. In our community and economic development, we also manage some processes. You just approved the food trucks program last Tuesday. Adam and his team, for instance, will be managing the approval process, and ultimately, I think, in partnership with the clerks, will be helping to issue those approvals. They also manage in his shop the facade improvement program through the DDA and a trash management program, which is going through some pretty significant changes in this fiscal year. There are also programs that are often a group effort to produce, again, between departments, between divisions. I think a good example of this would be the infrastructure projects that are often funded by the DDA. They're supported by staff in multiple departments, and ultimately, through this partnership, we're able to make investments happen, specifically in this example, in the DDA. I think you'll see some other buckets of programs related to business support, and again, I think these are areas where we work together on a multitude of types of issues, and it might involve multiple people from different disciplines getting together and trying to work through issues and find common ground and find solutions. So events, there's another great example of that. I think the El Fresco involves every department of the city. Similarly, marketing of, you know, things happening in downtown takes multiple, you know, boards and commissions. The DDA certainly involves the DMV and staff from CED as well as communications, et cetera. So just a few examples of those types of programs. But ultimately, what we're, I think, trying to do as a department is to balance being an attractive place for investment with the enforcement of the city code. And that is really along, you know, the code along with the comprehensive plan and the strategic priorities of the council is really what ultimately guides our work. And so in terms of PBB, you will see many of these themes that I just outlined in the various program buckets. Happy to talk more about specifics, but just to give you kind of a sense, in terms of the general fund, our income is really limited in the PBD department. It's limited to the fees that we're able to charge. It's limited to the support we get from component units. Largely, the Brownfield redevelopment authority is the, that's kind of the elephant in the room because it's the huge bucket, and really, that's related to the sixteen active brownfield plans that we have that ultimately we capture the tax increment financing for, and the lion's share of that money then is reimbursements to the developers for those sixteen different plans. And this has grown largely in the last couple of years, just based on the two big plans that we have, Center City and Park District. We also receive support from the DDA. We receive support from the local development financing authority, and also, we, some admin support from the community development block grant portion of the city's budget. The other income source that we have is fairly infrequent, but you will see some line items in the fiscal twenty-year, twenty-one and twenty-two actuals where the sale, for instance, of Lot Four or the sale of a small piece of property at 2773 Coleman will hit our books there. But many programs cannot or do not have associated fees, and where there are fees, we are often mandated or require them to be cost recovery. And so two great examples of that are housing and building, where essentially the cost of those licenses and permits needs to really be a one-to-one with the amount of resources that go into the approvals for those. In terms of highlights of the fiscal year 23 activities and the programs, I thought I would focus on those that are most clearly aligned with council priorities, but again, happy to talk more if you have questions. So in planning and zoning, for instance, we're working on a host of zoning amendments, those that are informed by the housing action plan, those elements from the Form-Based Code effort that we have prioritized for discussion and consideration, and then also the administrative approvals and streamlining of processes are all right in line with the council's priorities. In housing, we're working to revisit the work and restart the work of a property maintenance code update. We had begun this effort a couple of years ago prior to COVID and sort of had shelved it, and we're bringing it back, which is important, I think, you know, bringing our property maintenance code up to more contemporary standards. Across really multiple divisions, and we have introduced a new program name, something we've been working on, but we want to be more intentional about, and that is housing equity. So I think you'll see next week, when we talk about CDBG, some of the programs, some of the program tweaks that, you know, we'd like to make ultimately to better be more effective in utilizing those programs to serve the needs of low- to moderate-income folks. And also, I think you'll see in the work of the planning and housing commissions and what they're working on from a policy perspective and will bring to council for various considerations. Hopefully, you'll see that housing equity focus. In economic development, you'll see multiple activities related to place-based inclusionary economic development. We have a strategic plan that we're working on and will bring forward to the city council soon, which hopefully has a lot of alignment with the council's strategic priorities, and will outline some of the more granular things we'll be working on. But ultimately, the big-picture themes are about creating opportunities to reduce barriers, barriers to our market through better processes, better economic development tools, et cetera. You'll also see really a focus to supporting the lower-income folks in our community. Across really our department and I think into other departments, it's more of a citywide thing, really a focus on data. And for us, it's about tracking, managing, and utilizing data to help with better decision-making and ultimately better operations. You'll see, you know, redevelopment and development support is a lot of what we do, both in terms of the funds that pass through our department, but also it's about sort of, again, kind of trying to attract investment to occur, to build community and move the city forward. So you'll continue to see that, and we will continue to manage the city's efforts. And ultimately, you know, those are just some of the highlights, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. And I have with me tonight Heather Pope, who's our operations manager for the department and is super knowledgeable in all aspects of what we do, so I may have to call on her if you have specific questions in an area.
I have a question. Is there some page or series of pages that sets forth income to your department and expenditures? I'm having trouble finding that.
So it starts on page forty-four of the budget, and it breaks it down between mostly divisions, although planning and zoning also includes community and economic development.
Building and housing are right together.
Oh, and building and housing are together as well.
And then planning and zoning would start back on page sixty.
Have you heard that, that page sixty is where planning is going to be? So forty-nine is planning, is the, housing, building, forty-four, so, and then sixty?
Sixty is where planning starts.
Sixty is where planning and housing are going to be. I'm sorry, sixty's what?
Sixty's planning and economic development.
So essentially, for your universe, we're looking at those two sections?
It's actually four. So there's building and permit, building permits is pages forty-four and forty-five. Housing is forty-six, oh, sorry, forty-four through forty-six. Housing is forty-seven through forty-nine. And then planning and zoning, community development would be pages sixty through sixty-two. And then there's like the social services and economic development assistance. That's where like the land proceeds are. That's on page sixty-three and sixty-four.
So is, going back to the pie graphs, starting, is there a pie graph that gives us a breakdown in terms of Mr. Farinbach's duties?
Nope, because building and housing are considered public safety, so that's a function. So we look at that as a function base. So building and housing is under the public safety piece, and then the planning, zoning, social services, and economic development is considered community development and health and welfare. So those are the two different functions that Tom would be falling under.
And then parking, which is that?
And then parking, right.
So I'm looking at, we're back to this, Dana. I'm back to Roman numeral thirty-nine, expenditures by type, all funds. So is this nested in there someplace?
So on page thirty-nine, it would fall just in the general fund, these parts that we're talking about right now, and then it would be an enterprise fund for the parking system. So this is very broad-level look at the government.
I'm sorry, can you give me those again, please?
Parking falls under the enterprise column, and all of his other sections would fall under the general fund column.
Okay, I'm a color-code guy, so what colors am I looking for on that pie graph?
On page thirty-nine, it's actually broken out by personnel services versus operating, so it's not really broken out in that respect.
Okay, is there a pie graph that would demonstrate?
If you go to, if you go to page forty-one, so two pages after that, there's another set of two pie graphs. So you would be looking for that pink color, health, welfare, and community development.
Okay.
That would be one hundred percent Tom. And then the housing and building would be in the purplish color with public safety.
The public safety?
But remember, that's where police and fire are as well.
I call that blue.
Lavender.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Purple's down below that. Yeah, okay. So, but those two, those two, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And parking. I keep forgetting about parking, but we'll talk about parking next week. Yellow, parking.
Gotcha.
XL, which I thought was fifty-five?
No, XL is forty.
It's forty? All right, thank you. So much for the Latin lessons. Thank you, sorry.
We may try a different naming convention next year to try to make that more efficient because when we get to the bigger ones, it gets a little.
It is harder.
We'll try some A B's or something like that.
Just use regular numbers and put them in parentheses or something.
Just like parentheses around them, yeah.
It's kind of where Ivy League education gets you, Bam, so.
Lansing Eastern represent.
I thought you said you took Latin. That's why I'm trying to figure out why I know that.
I, it was a pandemic project.
Okay. I'm sure it's just maybe caustic. Question. Any other questions?
Your scope of services is so broad that forming an intelligent question is difficult.
I can also add a commentary on that because Mr. Farinbach's department was actually two departments about a decade ago, and it was sort of the building and housing department was a separate department from the zoning, planning, and economic development, which was more the future planning, land use, and zoning. And we put those both together because we wanted to try to increase the communication and collaboration, so make sure that people were following the plans that were approved and we actually got to constructing them and so on. So that was part of the idea, is to create that greater synergies and collaboration between both those operations and make it one department. Hence, planning, building, and development came from those two separate operations. So, you know, that's kind of the, one is goes the actual building department, and one is actually the planning and zoning. Putting them together is planning, building, and development.
So what color was that, then?
Couldn't tell you. That was a decade ago.
It's a poor color, fuchsia.
Fuchsia.
Councilperson Watson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the what's up on the screen, was that to us or is that someone else's?
Yeah, this is the planning, building, and development minus parking, PBB. And again, this is fiscal year 22, but it gives you an idea of kind of, you know, the size of the programs from a financial perspective.
And the reason that first one of economic redevelopment support, those show up so big compared to the departments is because that's mainly money coming in and out and going through TIF plans and brownfield plans. When you get to the far side, building code, housing and university relations, and planning and zoning, those are really the department operations with people that are running programs. The other ones are program dollars that are very big. That's why it sort of throws it out of whack. I don't know if you want to touch upon the different operations, if that helps, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally I've attempted to do that, just given sort of the, you know, the main thrusts of what we do really is represented in these programs, and we have a lot of similar programs in terms of their name and in terms of like what they're geared up to do, like supporting citizen consultation, for instance. But that conversation will be a lot different if it's happening in building versus if it's happening in planning and zoning or community and economic development. And sometimes, it's going to take multiple of those divisions to be involved in a conversation to help someone, you know, take advantage of an opportunity.
Will you tell me the tabs to get to that?
Dana, I found it easiest to just Google priority-based budgeting East Lansing. That got me there quicker than going through our system.
Yeah, I've got the site up. I just need to know how to get to that specifically.
Okay, so you go to tree plot, right there.
And then, in the selective service area should be planning, building, and development.
Just click on the planning, like any of those boxes within the planning, building, and development sub, and then this should pop up.
And then go to the overall tab at the far end, which shows the emphasis of overall, sort of our requirements to provide the project. The other ones are tabs that talk about. The other ones are tabs that talk about those specific areas. So go to the end, one gives you the sort of best sense of our, the urgency, I guess, or the importance of the program.
So I'm a little bit outside my expertise, but I think the, I think the size of the box is the dollar amount, so the larger the box, the more the money. The color indicates whether it's more aligned with the city's priorities or not.
Correct.
And then is there something else you would learn visually?
It would also, the color would also take into account the mandate reliance, cost recovery, demand, population serve. So those are called basic program attributes, so we score them on that as well. So it lines up with that as well as strategic priorities. So the darker the color, the more it aligns with strategic priorities and falls into those categories. The lighter the color, the less aligned, I suppose, would be the right terminology.
And when you float over a box with your cursor, it actually shows you the amount of dollars spent in the program, the amount of staff time allocated. And there could be, one staff person like Tom may be allocated across numerous of these programs because he oversees them all. So he would be allocated to the building code, to university and housing, and to the planning department as well, because his time is divided up in supervision amongst all those departments.
Yeah, I've said before, I do like this site a lot and I cannot see that. And obviously I can't click on it either. But if you all ever think about attaching the link so that I, anyone can just, you know, quickly get through it and follow along, that would be cool, because I like, you know, looking at it. But I can't from there.
Could you find the tree plot?
Yeah, I did actually, I just went out of it. Whoops. No, I mean, and I did, I was in it, I just don't know where it went. But I was in it, so thank you.
Any other questions for Tom before we switch to Nicole?
I guess I did have just that, the big redevelopment support box that's the TIF-related. I know that we have several very long-running TIFs, but we also have some relatively short ones. And it seems like at the moment, the redevelopment climate is not quite as hot as it was maybe four or five years ago. Is that, I mean, do we have any plans that are dropping off in the foreseeable future?
Certainly, yeah, there's various plans. And I think as part of the component unit, part of the budget, we've outlined the tax years, page two-hundred and four of the budget, which shows you our estimated end date. And of course, that's going to be a function of what happens with, with tax rates. But, but it's typically a pretty good estimate, especially as a plan is, you know, has been going on for a while. So you can see, you know, the big one that, that's moving off would be Park District in twenty-twenty-four, which is really after twenty-twenty-three. And the A and G Residence is the most near-term one that will be going off after this fiscal year.
Cool, thanks. And then I, I guess the, the underlying meaning behind that question was that box will shrink accordingly then?
Yes.
So.
And especially as the larger ones go off, it will shrink.
So it's really just a, a kind of a holding cell, so to speak?
A pass-through, yeah.
A pass-through, yes.
So it's kind of, it highlights one of kind of maybe the weaknesses of this visual tool.
Right.
Where some of that kind of thing needs explanation.
Right, because right now it makes all of the other boxes look very small.
Yes.
Yes.
We're aware of that.
And that's why if you kind of look at this tool, look at the right-hand column, those three departments and divisions going down, that's really, that's really the operations that has the people and does, does the operation of his department. Some of the economic development people are going to be, are going to be in those bigger boxes, right? Because they're helping to oversee the plans, correct?
Yeah.
But that's primarily where the departments are.
Right, and you can see we have a bunch of like really small boxes where, you know, we might, then we might just be more, we might not spend as much money there, but we might spend, you know, staffing resources, like there might be one person that's in charge of a particular aspect there, I think. Or there might be multiple people from multiple divisions. This is just kind of where we put it together from a program standpoint, so you can kind of visually see what, what's happening.
Sure, cool.
So with that, if we're all set, we'll switch it to Nicole for Public Works.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Hello. Get this closer, but I also have to open my very nice budget sheet. Can you go back one on this? So as everybody knows, this is not the only time that you will see me during the budget process. This is more of the smaller component of the Department of Public Works. We are a, a unit of, you know, probably approximately seventy people. And we are not all in the general fund. I think everybody, especially Jill, can be thankful of that. But overall, as, as you see kind of how we, we are looking here, if you look at the overall picture, the biggest box up there is Department of Public Works. So, you know, as you look at this, you know, we're about forty percent, you know, of the, of the overall, of the city's entire, entire budget. And then as, as you click into the, the Department of Public Works, what constitutes, you know, a percentage of, of what enters the, the general fund is probably more about, you know, that, you know, twelve percent of our budget is affiliated with, with the general fund portion. And of the entire general fund, I should say, so of the entire general fund, DPW comprises about twelve percent of that. And if you look at the entire DPW budget, we're at about, you know, five, seven percent of that, seven percent for fiscal year twenty-three of the DPW budget is affiliated with the general fund. So, you know, throughout this, you know, I'm going to go through kind of the components that are associated with, with the general fund. You know, for things that are affiliated with, with the general fund, things are going to fluctuate over the, the fiscal years. Whether it's, you know, more capital projects being done, more grants or more federal funding received, you know, that's where we're going to have some, some various percentages as, as we go through the, the fiscal years. So the components that fall into the general fund from the Department of Public Works are Public Works Administration, Engineering, Downtown Maintenance, Street Lighting, Sidewalks, Drains, Alley Maintenance, and Parks Maintenance. So if you want to start on page fifty, through Public Works Administration, you know, that's kind of where, where we start. And this isn't, you know, this is a pretty nebulous one. It's not that, that, that exciting. But obviously, the Public Works Administration, you know, we coordinate and we administer, you know, all of the DDA activities of the Department of Public Works. And, you know, one of the key things that has increased here within this, this section is that we are including ARPA funding for the backflow prevention. This falls into the Public Works Administration account. And, you know, we do have some decreases also as we enter into fiscal year twenty-three, and that's mostly due to the Director of Public Works being on long-term military leave. So if we, if we continue to go, yeah, I won't spend too much time on any of these, but if there's any specific questions on any of these subsets, we can just go right in those as well. So the next task, you know, if we just continue on page fifty-two is Engineering. So Engineering, you know, they can, we comprise about, you know, seven hundred plus thousand dollars, you know, within, within the budget. But a lot of what we put forth there gets allocated to different funds. We're doing design work, that is for the sewer, the water, or the roads. And that's allocated to those utility funds that you'll hear about on May tenth. You know, so for this fiscal year budget, we're about four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand is expected to be allocated to other funds. You know, we have our permit and inspection fees, and we set those permit fees to be able to cover the time that we spend in the field. So if we have a right-of-way permit inspection, we're actually doing it down to about the hour, hour and a half of what we feel it's going to be take, take for us to either go out in the field and to process those permits. So it, it does cover a lot of that, which does get housed in, in the general fund. You know, overall, we are, you know, there's some increases based on, you know, cost of living increases, but overall, we are still, we still have vacant position. We're still down in engineering tech position, and we are not funding the senior engineering manager position for the fiscal year twenty-three. So we're continuing to look for skilled professionals and, you know, getting, getting people on, on board is still a major push, from my view. Continuing on to Downtown Maintenance, it's, it's lucky we have pages right in a row that we don't have to flip back and forth in, and they're not in Roman numerals, so all good. Downtown Maintenance, we get components from the DDA for the maintenance of the downtown area. This has, actually, we renegotiate, we have a new contract with the, the DDA to be able to, that has provided an increase in that, so we can be able to cover the new infrastructure downtown and just the increase in the activities that we're covering in the downtown area. So, you know, the overall net impact on the general fund is pretty, pretty minimal at that ten thousand dollars, but, and we are getting a nice bump from the DDA to be able to cover those activities that we provide with personnel for, you know, that, the maintenance of the downtown area. Street lighting, page fifty-six. So street lighting is a, is a big component here at, you know, about a million dollars. You know, we have over three thousand or actually thirty-four hundred streetlights, give or take. That's not an exact number, but it's pretty, pretty close, you know, throughout the city. And, you know, that's about, you know, three-hundred-and-eighteen per light, per year. So, and this is only covering the maintenance and operations of the existing lights throughout the city. As, you know, people come in and say, let's, you know, expand, let's do more lights within, maybe it's the northern tier or other areas, we need to be cognizant that it's not just the cost of the infrastructure to put in the light, but it's the continual, continual maintenance and operation of that light. We are looking and continually working with the Board of Water and Light and Consumers Energy to install LED lights and become as efficient as possible.
So three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per light is your maintenance cost? Is that what your figure is?
That's my, that's my back-of-the-envelope math, because, you know, we have about thirty-four hundred streetlights.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so.
Yep. So I'm going to continue around, I'm on page fifty-seven. And this, it combines sidewalk drains and alley maintenance. If you want to break down more between those funds, you can go to page five, and that does detail the revenues and expenditures and net impact between the sidewalk drains and alley maintenance portion. But, you know, for the, the sidewalk portion of it, you know, we are including CDBG funding as well as ARPA funding in here to be able to continue or re-up the hazardous sidewalk program. You know, we're with the amount of this year of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you know, we can hope that we can, you know, let a project that might be in the order of a four-hundred or five-hundred thousand dollars. Now, you might think that's a lot of money for a hazardous sidewalk program. It's, it's really, it's really not. You know, this could, this might fix, you know, one to two mi, one to two miles, you know, of, of sidewalk within a neighborhood to where we can go through that. But a lot of how far this money will go will be dependent on ADA crossings, will be dependent on trees, and will just be dependent on how far gone some of these sidewalks are within these neighborhoods. You know, with this, you know, we can hope that some of this will continue, which we've split the ARPA funding, so we can continue it and then make some impacts. But we have over thirty-four miles of sidewalks within the city. Probably that's closer to like, that might be a wrong number. I, I'm thinking we're closer to thirty-eight miles of sidewalks that had not been addressed as of twenty-seventeen. I was looking through our old hazardous sidewalk program and, you know, how far we had gotten. And we had been continually doing sidewalk programs, you know, through two thou, you know, from pretty much two thousand and one, and then up until about twenty-seventeen, where we kind of more equated doing sidewalk programs as part of our road projects. And then, you know, it really fell off to where we were only doing the reactive maintenance on some of those hazardous sidewalk areas with the allocation of about fifty thousand a year within the general fund. So. Think we'll, any questions on sidewalks right now? I don't, I guess we can wait till the end, but. Yep.
Keep, keep going.
Okay, keep going. All right, so going over to drains, you know, we have the, the component of drains that was, the addition to the drains for the ARPA funding. And this is going to help us with the general fund component of being able to do the design construction, construction as well as the Eagle permitting for the maintenance of Taylor and Freagle Drains, retention ponds at DPW Aquatic Center, soccer complex, and fire station. Some of those are allocated to other funds, too. So the ARPA funding is going to help offset the, the amount that was affiliated with the general fund. And we have multiple outfalls that we need to repair as well. We also have an increase in drain assessments. The Montgomery Drain Assessment has come online, so that's, you know, upwards of a hundred and thirty-plus, you know, per, per year. And then, you know, Ingham County and Clinton County have been continuing to also work on their drains. So which may, you know, as they do more projects, as they assess their drains and do mapping on some of their drains, you know, the assessments for us get larger. The assessments are, we pay the full cost of that and we do not pass that assessment on to the property owners. Alley Maintenance, I think that is, oh, that's still in this one. Pretty straightforward. We own our, our city's alleys and we also have a contract with Hawksdust for the private roads in there. There's a, a contract that was signed with that, that we would provide maintenance on those. So this, this covers that cost. There's pretty much minor increases from last fiscal year to this fiscal year to cover the personnel cost increase. Kind of the same realm. Parks Maintenance, we'll have to flip a couple pages, that's on page sixty-four. But Parks Maintenance is another large component of what we do. You know, this is, you know, the net impact, I think, on this is, you know, one, one three, one point three million plus, you know. But this is the maintenance of all the city parks, all of the city-owned property. And, and it takes a lot, and it's pretty much on par with what we have been doing in the past. We have some increase in operating costs and we're focusing on, you know, key repairs of different things, including some of the playground equipment. And that in a nutshell is the general fund portion of the Department of Public Works. Any questions?
I'm going to have to write them out and email them. I, I have questions, but I can't quite articulate them, so, but thank you. So, but one quick thing, so you said about thirty-eight miles of sidewalks, is that throughout the city or is that in a particular area? That seems.
No, that's, that's just, let me get that number for you of our total, because, you know, earlier today, I was just taking a closer look at the hazardous sidewalk program that we've had in our path, in the past. And, you know, they had subsets of areas that were called future. Kind of what I intuned as the remaining section of the sidewalk we haven't touched yet, and that was that thirty-eight miles. And, okay, but a lot of the areas in the city we have touched, but they, they weren't in the core, like Bailey and Chesterfield neighborhoods.
I, I hear a lot, particularly in Southeast Marble, where only Cahill has a sidewalk. And a member of the Transportation Commission has, a year or so ago, piloted a sidewalk idea to me, and I'll, I'll communicate that to you and, and Councilmember Watson and give her due credit for it. It's, it'd be easier for me to just type it out and send it in an email for later discussion. So, thank you.
Okay. Yes, we do have areas that do not have sidewalks at all. And, you know, there's, you know, sections of major roads that, you know, we've identified that have sidewalk gaps. And, you know, we continuously look at how we can incorporate some of those into. gaps. And, you know, we continuously look at how we can incorporate some of those into, into projects and get funding for them. For example, there's a sidewalk gap on Bercham Drive right now from about Timberlane all the way to, this would be on the north side of Bercham, from Timberlane to Hagedorn. And that's, we did receive some TAP grant funding through the state of Michigan, and that's being incorporated into our Bercham Road Resurfacing Project.
Great. Thank you.
Just one question. For the sidewalks, is there a list that we can get of previous amounts that have been spent, maybe like for the past five years?
You mean sidewalks that were affiliated with, the amount that was affiliated with the general fund?
Yes.
I have a sticky note if you want me to read it.
Yeah.
In 2022, we had $50,000 that was allocated in the general fund. In 2021, it was $125,000. In 2020, it was $117,000. In 2019, was $56,000. 2018 was $50,000. Twenty, I don't know how far you want me to go. I can go back to 2012, and that's the end of my sticky note.
Okay.
That was budget, not actual. Correct. I mean, but we base it kind of, you know, we do try to stay within the budget, but, you know. So, you know, we will prepare for projects, like the, the couple of projects that were in the $100,000 range, we, and in 2020, this probably didn't happen because we probably didn't utilize all of that. But, we correlate, say, we have a street project and, you know, we want to correlate any sidewalk assessments, you know, in conjunction with that street project or utility project that we're doing, you know. So, that offsets a little bit because we're not doing the ADA ramps. Anytime we touch a street, we have to upgrade our ADA ramps at our intersections. And that is affiliated and taken, the cost gets absorbed by the street projects, by the major or local street fund, not the sidewalk fund. So, you know, it offsets it a little bit. So, there were plans in those years to be able to utilize that funding. But, the last time that we did a big hazardous sidewalk project in 2016 was $325,000 were allocated within the general fund to be able to help with that project. And that hazardous sidewalk project was about a $500,000 bid project.
Thank you.
And then, CDBG would be in addition to that. This is all only general fund. Spend money out of CDBG over prior years to do the Bailey intersections and the ramps that you were talking about.
Correct. Yes.
For two years, right? CDBG funds have gone to sidewalks?
CDBG funds have gone to sidewalks for, I believe, the past four years. It's, we're coming on phase four of that, of the Albert Avenue replacement.
We can go back and get that data. I thought for a bit, we were paying the Avondale Square.
Yep.
So, have to go back and figure that out, but we can get that number for you.
On the sidewalk projects, are the no sidewalks the most hazardous? I'm just trying to comprehend the, how these are prioritized or what that looks like.
It really is a tough thing, because you'd think that everyone wants sidewalks, but there have been times we've tried to close gaps and talked about putting sidewalks in areas. And people who have lived without sidewalks for their entire existence of being in the neighborhood don't really want sidewalks. And we've had some significant pushback in some neighborhoods where we said we're going to put sidewalks. So, to people who have sidewalks like myself, who really enjoy them, it's, it seems sort of just normal that you'd want them. But then you go to try to put them, and they'd have issues about the right-of-way, the possible removal of trees, all of those things coming to play. And it's a lot more difficult to get consensus to put a sidewalk down a particular street than you would think. And I don't know, Nicole, if you want to talk about that, some challenges we've had.
Yeah, we ran into a, a pretty big challenge was affiliated with the Safe Routes to School funding. Safe Routes to School is going through major infrastructure grants to where they get about $200-plus dollars per school. We are working with them to, to submit more applications. But, we've only submitted one application because we really got, I don't want to say burnt, but we got a little burnt on the first one, because we had it allocated of about $400,000 in our application that we would have most likely received. And then at the last minute section to where we had been putting sidewalks, that they did not have sidewalks, the neighborhood, you know, ca, were not in support of it, even though we had, you know, walked them along the process. They were still not in support and came to city council, and, and that was taken out of the projects. And essentially, we lost about, about $200,000 of free money to be able to install those sidewalks.
Am I mistaken, but the property owners still get billed for part of the sidewalk, correct?
In most, if, if, if city council orders in a sidewalk, yes, they would get billed for a sidewalk. This was another component to, hey, Safe Routes to School applied for this grant. And because of that, you as a homeowner are getting free sidewalk. You have to maintain it. And in, you know, 10 years, if it breaks up, you have, you're responsible to pay for it. But, it was not being ordered in for them to provide the installation of that sidewalk. But, city council has the authority to order in any sidewalk within the city of East Lansing, based on our ordinance.
I would imagine the priority would be on surface streets. You get pushback on the larger surface street projects, or this is just inside neighborhoods?
You know, most of our major streets do have sidewalks affiliated. There's some gaps, but they're not, you know, people, the walkability of most of our major streets is pretty good. It's within the local neighborhoods, and people who have not had sidewalks.
Just from my institutional memory, it was council that kind of backed down from the neighborhood's position?
Correct.
Okay. Another question. On the Backflow project, are we going to look to sunset the Backflow project at some point, set a date as whenever we feel like setting that? And then, where will those funds go on the backside? Will they flow back into the budget, back into the general fund? What's the, how does that operate for?
So, do you have made a...
George question. Yeah, I think it's just a matter of how long we want to have it out there and how long we think it'll be useful for people. But, I think we want to continue it, at least for the foreseeable future. And perhaps, you know, at the end of the year, give people, if it's trickled and there's not many applications, give people some sort of a fair warning that we're going to be closing the program after a period of time to give them one more shot at it. And then, and then say the money will not be there after that, and then have council reallocate it. So, I think we want to give, I mean, I'd say at least, at least the major of the year, calendar year and beyond, to, for the $500,000. And then, if it's trickling out and people are not using it, then we put perhaps a warning out to folks and say, you've got three more months to use this money. At that point, council will be reallocating, because there's not the demand for it. And then council can reallocate it in another way.
Yeah, I think a date, setting a date helps to move people along in whatever process.
Yeah, because we would want to be able, if people aren't using those funds, we'd want to be able to reallocate them before we can't use those funds anymore before, so we can obligate them and continue to use our ARPA funds.
Do you have any update off the top of your head of how many?
Not off the top of my head. We can get that update, though. Yeah, probably around 60 people that have taken, $60,000, sorry.
You're good, too.
So, for that question, we come back to council then, say there's 250 left to begin that?
Absolutely.
I think we wait and see, you know, give through the summertime and into fall, and then if there's not use, we can, we can put a warning out to folks and say, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, I mean, at the end of the calendar year, perhaps, we would want to encourage people to use it by. We can set some dates, just see how much use we get.
Yep.
One more. Did you finish your thought?
Okay. I had a question about the Hognest streets, because, so that, it's a housing development that got a variance on the width of their streets by having, like, are all streets within housing developments automatically private streets?
No.
So, they got a variance to have a private street that was narrower than our code street, but now we're maintaining their streets?
It was part of the original contract that we would maintain the streets.
So, I can give them a little bit of...
Yeah, I think I need a little bit of history on that.
So, it was not in the city of East Lansing, and it was already, basically, it wasn't a platted subdivision, so they could have private roads. They made the roads to their own specifications, which were not the roads that we would make. It had like the rolled curbs. It was narrow and didn't have the base that we would normally put on the road. And then, there was a negotiation to bring it into the city. And as a part of that negotiation to bring it into the city, they changed the makeup of the housing to what the city thought would be useful in terms of single-family housing. And the city provided some agreement on the maintenance and plowing, potholing, crack sealing, I believe.
Correct.
And then, but not the replacement. And then, they were, as a part of their association, saving their own sort of war chest for the replacement. So, it's kind of a hybrid because of the way it came into the city, it was already all set up in the township.
So, we, we weren't involved in the decision at the beginning, but we became involved in the decision when the boundary changed?
They were a part of a 425 agreement to bring it into the city, and we negotiated some, some resolution somewhere between a public road and a not-public road.
Okay. And who was providing their public safety before the township?
So, it wasn't really, there was nothing there. It was really, it was an old airport. I mean, maybe Mr. Brookover even has this history, but it was an airport up there and vacant fields. And then, it was, I'm not, he's been around a lot of times, who knows the planning up there. But, but it was not in the city because it was an airport and vacant fields. And then, they were going to make it into a mobile home park, basically, for the entire stretch of it. And then, the developer said, I want to bring it into the city, and I'm going to, willing to make it single-family houses. And then, the city went back and forth. And then, there was a discussion about, we will accept the, a portion of the road responsibility.
Okay.
And it was...
And the roads were built at that point, even though they had not...
This is getting to the end of my knowledge here.
I just, I don't know. I, whenever I drive around, I'm struck by hunger.
Ron was here as well, so he knows.
Yeah, it was, it was actually approved when it was brought into the city to be a manufactured home park. And I think that was part of the reason it was 425ed, because I think the township wouldn't allow it. But, my understanding is the tax rate that you get on a manufactured home is very, very small. So, when the developer wanted to convert it to single-family homes, I think the tax rate was like $300 or something like that per unit versus a single-family home. That's $3,000 or $4,000 per unit. So, the city, it made sense for the city to agree to certain conditions, like maintaining the roads, because the tax rate was going to be so much more beneficial for the city in the long run. So, so that, that's why the roads are built so narrow. It was, it was originally built like the northern portion to be a manufactured home park. The market fell out of that, and they couldn't sell them, so that's why they converted.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. If we do another one of those in the future, I'd like to see wider roads, I guess, is the subtext of that comment.
I don't think we would.
I don't think we would do another one of those.
It was, it was, it was a function of how it developed on our border.
Got it.
And not wanting to be left with something that we weren't happy with at all. So, no one would be happy with.
That makes more sense. I appreciate the history on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
Question on, just generally in infrastructure, kind of all arrows pointing up for you guys outside of this budget, or anticipating particular windfalls, wish money, federal, state, and that, and how is that been accounted for inside of this world?
Inside of the general fund world?
Yeah, because I'm sure things are, there's a lot of shoes that haven't dropped yet, I'm sure, in the infrastructure works world, where it's going to kind of point towards you guys.
Correct. And it would most likely fall within our, you know, our enterprise funds within water and sewer. We, we don't have the full mechanism on, on how those are going to be allocated to the city yet. A lot of what we heard is, you know, additional funds that get pushed to the state for like drinking water and sewer, water resource recovery facilities would be through the same SRF, state revolving fund mechanism that we have in place right now. So...
And that's also a good point there, that Nicole will be back to talk about water, sewer, and major and local streets.
For the whole two hours.
Yes, it's a lot of, a lot of, all infrastructure, all day.
I'm so excited.
I can't wait.
I know. It's great.
So, but so we'll get, and that's obviously where a lot of that money will show up, is in major local streets and water and sewer. So, you know, there's, we're keeping an eye out on all those parts.
Ron might not realize that there's a legacy in the mayor position that you have to talk about sewers at every opportunity. It's an important part of the job.
Yes.
Sewers are important. That's before flooding.
Yeah. Now we talk about floods.
The budget does not include any kind of infrastructure revenue, right? The only money in the budget right now is ARPA, or things that we know are coming. So, if there's other things that we're not aware of, not in this budget, and most likely, it may be things that we also aren't planning to spend in this budget, right? So, it'd kind of be a wash, or maybe it helps us. But, I'm guessing that, that's not the case.
Any more questions?
Thanks, Nicole. Now, let's jump to Christian.
So, I'm not going to talk about sewers, but I am going to talk about one of my favorite places, and then one of my favorite things, and that's the East Lansing Public Library. And someone give me a signal if I start talking or rambling on and on, because I literally could talk till tomorrow on all the wonderments of the East Lansing Public Library. And this year, more than ever, we need to bring the library front of mind, out there with every conversation, because we will be on the ballot in November of 2022. So, just want to share a little bit about some of the things that people might not know. I know all of you are well-versed on library services, but libraries are not books. Books are not our brand. Information is our brand. And disseminating information in a multitude of formats, that is what libraries are. And we fought the book branding for my full career, which is many, more than one or two decades. So, we are places where people can come and just be, where community conversations can happen, more so before the pandemic, but starting to open back up, and people are starting to come back and have those conversations. We try to bridge the gap with technology in that we circulate hotspots. We have about 50 hotspots out in circulation. We have 20 Chromebooks that people can check out. We provide one-on-one technology training. We provide job help training. We do a tremendous amount of early childhood literacy programming. And then, we have databases that allow others, people to learn from home. LinkedIn Learning, people just need their library card number and can access all of that for free. And Mangle Languages has about 200 and some languages that you can learn. And a multitude of other things, like we have the Chiltons manuals in databases that you can use when your car breaks down and you are sitting in your driveway, and you need to look something up very quickly. We also provide the only drop-in free teen after-school program in the city. Pre-pandemic, we were seeing about 120 young people every day in a building that's just over 26,000 square feet. That is a lot of bodies. That is a lot of noise. And now, since the pandemic, we see anywhere from 35 to 80. Still a good amount of people, but not at the 120 level that we were seeing before. We also give out a snack every day after school, because those kids come in there and are hungry. So, we were able to save money when we were closed and there wasn't school for the year and had snack money. But, we, that money is dwindling quickly, because snacks are expensive for teenagers. Also, while, while we did most of our programming virtually for well over a year, we had, still had about 13,000 attendees at those programs, which is pretty amazing, when you have people who are on Zoom all day long and then in the evening came back for more. Now, granted, some of that was our summer reading program. I will tell you, some of it was YouTube video where Coach Izzo read a children's book, or our state and federal reps read as well. And those were very popular programs. But, nonetheless, people were tuning in. The other thing that we have really been working on in the last year and a half is a diversity audit, which is systematically going through our entire collection to make sure that we have representation from all areas of our community, of our state, and then the country. This takes a great deal of time. We actually touch every book. We actually touch every book. And and we struggle, because there are some books that are classics that are questionable. So we will continue doing that, and as we progress, we are also looking at changing how books are classified. So moving away from "don't shriek" the Dewey Decimal System, and moving more into categories of books, and taking Black History out of the 300s, which is tends to be social sciences, and putting it in American history, or European history, or wherever, as a better fit. So that's just a little background about what we do at the library. We also have the library on the go. I invite any of you to come along with us. It's fun. We put out our awning, and we, you know, chat with people at the farmer's market, or at the art festival. We are going to make weekly rounds to Deer Path Apartments this summer, and we hit up the summer schools. So it's it's been a great resource. We had hoped to have it before 2020. It arrived in October of 2020, and then we weren't able to fully use it right away, but it is out there now. And visiting the retirement centers, and one of them, when it pulls up at the Willows of East Lansing, if it's nice weather, the people are outside and cheer when they see the van come up. So it's very reassuring. As I mentioned, we are on the ballot in 2022, and we are funded by two property tax millages, often called levees. These millages are, as I said, for 10 years, and one is approved by the council, and one is approved by the East Lansing voters. One mill equals right about 1.139 million. Not right about, that's pretty exact. And we are affected by headly rollback. So while we have two mills, we do not realize those two mills. The other thing is that the DDA captures a portion, a small percentage, of each of those millages. And then the library receives some additional funding, and our pages are on 120 to 125. And penal fines, often you've heard talk about with libraries, those are not overdue fines. Those are fines from law from the 1800s, where fines that are, you know, assessed in court or on civil infractions or civil or misdemeanors are portioned out, and a portion comes to the library, and that comes from the county. Those fines have been falling in the 11 years that I have been here. We probably in like, in 2011, we received close to $140,000. This year, I'm kind of estimating about 60,000, if, and for many reasons. And I will just give a quick history, because the penal fine issue is very complicated, and many libraries don't even understand it. But again, it was applied from the 1800 Act, and it was given to libraries so that it wouldn't go back to schools, or wouldn't go back to the cities, or it wouldn't go to places where they felt could benefit adversely, or could use the money in not appropriate ways. So it went to libraries because people felt that the libraries would use it to educate those who may have made these infractions, or to provide them a way out of their way of life. So so that's why libraries. And as cities and townships are looking and making more things that were misdemeanors, more civil infractions, or doing away with them, that's one reason why the funding is going down. Also, you know, we don't have a waste station in Ingle County. And oftentimes, when you drive by waste stations, there's nobody there. They're not open. So many reasons why, and that really happened during the recession, why penal fines started really on a decline. So enough about penal fines. Just know they are not your overdue fines. Currently, state aid for Michigan libraries is 48 cents per person. So we don't want to see our population decline, because then our state aid declines. We get very little amount from state aid, and that comes through the Library of Michigan. It's 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 a pass, the Library of Michigan is a pass through for it. And the council plays a very significant role in our millage, since the city is our taxing authority. So the council will introduce, create, approve the ballot language, and get it out there so that it's on the ballot. I've heard that the ballot is very long this year, it could be three pages. Notoriously, library ballots, and this is across the state, are the very last item on a ballot. So one of the other things we really have to share with people is that, complete the ballot. Go to the third page. That's the most important page, in my opinion. Again, I could spend all night talking about libraries and how libraries are formed. There are 17 different ways to form a library in the state of Michigan, but I won't. I won't continue to bore you, but I will talk about our tree plot a little bit. And it's really hard to put library services into priority-based budgeting in a tree plot, because truly, customer service should be all the biggest thing and the only thing you see, because everything we do is customer service. Every single staff member touches customer service. But we kind of put it in different buckets, so that you could see some of the some of the other items that we do. So customer service includes, as I said, the majority of staff, and much of library technology sits in customer service. And that's the technology you all see when you come into the library. But it's also the technology you don't see, which is our integrated library system, which operates or pretty much runs the library on the backend. But it's the self-checkout, it's the new outside 24/7 lockers, it's patron software, it's the things that allow you to get renewal notices or overdue notices from the library, or that you have a hold to pick up. So and then the other big bucket is collection development, which makes the most sense. You want your library to have materials. So that's where our physical and digital materials sit, and it includes, you know, things like the tool library, as well as books, and DVDs, and eBooks. And then the library of things, just in case you didn't know, on a very gray day, if you're feeling kind of blue, you can come to the library and check out a happy lamp for free. So we have some really fun things. It's also a place where we might put items for the Maker Studio that might circulate. And then databases that I mentioned earlier, streaming services, newspapers, magazines, all of that sit in collection development. And then we have a full-time staff member who solely selects our collection. That doesn't mean that she does it all alone in a vacuum. We definitely share, and we take patron requests, too. It's very important that we do that. And then I just want to share what the facility should be huge on here, especially for the last couple of years, because we have done significant upgrades to the facilities, specifically in site work along the front of the library, the sidewalks. The south side of the sidewalks were redone, and the ramp was regraded with less incline, and hand railings were put on both sides of that ramp. And then we had to replace our HVAC system. Our air handling units and our boilers were 60 years old. The average lifespan is about 20 to 25. So we were lucky those things were firing up every year. I can tell you, in my office, they weren't firing up. It was very cold in there. I would come in on days, and it would be 49 degrees in my office. So I'm looking forward to a new HVAC system. We had the chiller tested yesterday. This project was supposed to be done in November of 2021, but due to supply chain issues, it's gotten pushed back, and we're hoping for a completion now of sometime in May. In addition to the HVAC system being replaced and the sidewalk, we also realized that the limestone around the building is in very bad shape and crumbling, and the windows were leaking large amounts of water. So we've, we're about three fourths of the way through in replacing the windows around the library. We still have the large curtain wall to do in the front of the library. But all of those upgrades were definitely needed. Those windows were from 1962 as well. Let's see. I just want to also share that in 2023, the East Lansing Public Library will be 100 years old. So we're going to have a big party. Hopefully, no more surges, so we can all party together. And then the rest of the sidewalks, so going north, and then the north ramp, and then the other set of stairs, will be replaced starting late spring, summer, and with, and that will include an interactive children's garden that will go in front of the library. And the interactive children's garden is all through donated money, or fundraising, or grants. So that is money that has been saved up from several years of donations to go into that. And we are now looking at the front retaining wall, which is crumbling and in really bad shape, so that probably will be replaced, or something different will happen with that retaining wall. It might come out, and then we just differently grade the front of the library. And then there's steps that are by an emergency exit that need to be repaired and replaced. So any questions?
Questions? Comments?
I just want to say, you know, I learned through social media that East Lansing Police is doing some special enforcement on traffic, and I think this is a nice moment to say, go out there and speed, people. The library needs the money. My late fines alone aren't enough to carry it. But it's no secret that I moved to this town because I love the library so much, and while I am really, really partial to books, I also enjoy everything else, and it's it's just the spirit of the community. It's the heart of the community. You walk in there, and demographically, it's the United Nations. People are treated very well by the staff. The staff is very knowledgeable. And keep going. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I used to refer to my late fines as my personal library tax, but now I'm going to have to actually write you a donation, because there's no late fees.
That's right. We did a way with late fees.
Oh, you can come back.
Yeah. Now, there's caveats.
There's late fees on mail items, because we get charged from the loaning libraries, and we have to pay for those. So we have to recoup that. But other than that, pretty much, most late fees have been waived, and that was to be more equitable and to bring some of the non-users, to make them feel more comfortable in the library, because the library is still seen as a government entity. So we wanted people to feel that they could come in and use our materials.
Actually, I believe I have an outstanding fine, because I so enjoyed a book I borrowed from the library, that during the pandemic, I took it up north, and where it may be still. So I either owe you for the book, or I need to get up to mom's place and bring it back.
There you go.
But again, you know, there's, it is a very small price, small price to pay. That is just the best part of the community. So thank you.
Sure.
Counselperson Watson?
I was just wondering, do you guys have the letter system now that matches what the schools tell, you know, parents?
No, because public libraries don't do that. Public libraries allow people to come in and browse, and to pick out a book that they feel that they want to read or be read to. And, you know, we kind of try to work with people who are coming in, children who are coming in, parents who are coming in, and our rule is still, if you miss five words out of 50, it might be too hard, but no, we do not classify by the school system. We, you know, when we start to look at recategorizing, we will start probably classifying by, you know, not animals being the 500s, but animals, and seals, and different things like that.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking, wondering if maybe that would help with circulation, because I know when my son had lower scores, you know, you kind of panic, and you hope that you can maybe go somewhere to that matches, like the letter system. But, you know, just throwing that out there, in case it might be helpful to link up with the schools and have the letter system for the parents.
I do want to just plug, we do have tutor.com, that is completely free, and tutor.com will hook up any person of any age that wants to learn on pretty much any subject with a live tutor, and that is all free. So and we also have Homework Help, that our, that staff, that we bring in MSU students, actually, to help with.
That's nice. Thank you.
Yeah, I just kind of commentary, because I talked to you about the library quite a bit, because I have a lot of kids that I work with and coached that pass through there, and you have to call me to ask for help with some of them. Yeah, I think that's a really complicated issue. I think it's really difficult to even put a valuation on what you guys do for the community. I frankly, with the school system, I don't think school choice works without the library existing in the way it works right now. You house so many kids who don't even live relatively close to this area, and I know that I see them walking right across the field, out of the back door of the high school, straight to the library. I mean, I don't, none of this works without that, so that's, everybody could give you law enforcement, everybody should be supporting you, because you're you're a diversion, without even trying to be a diversion for some of these things. Without being fully budgeted and everything else, I think that's the conversation that needs to be had in the community when it's time to support this. There will be repercussions and consequences from not fully funding the library. It does things that you really can't put a price tag on. So I'm definitely, I'll be supporting, you know, I'm one of your biggest supporters in the community and anywhere that asks about the library, but I know that I, I would go as far, I know you can't, I'd go as far as say, you guys have saved lives, that I know some of the people that pass through those doors, and that what they would be doing if they weren't there, and they, you know, at the end of the school day. So, yeah, you can put the feather in your cap for that, and really know that we support you in the community. I believe we'll know this, but I think we got to raise the noise level and make them really understand everything you do beyond books and everything else. It's a, it's institution of sorts, and makes everything better, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say that I have often said to those who criticize the after-school program, that I'd rather than be in a safe environment, in a fairly safe area, and receiving some sort of programming that we can do, rather than out on the streets. And I think everyone in the community could rally around that. So and we have fantastic teen services people who have done wonderful programming and wonderful things. And and I'm just sharing with all of you, if you haven't come to the Maker Studio, if you haven't met our new Maker Studio STEAM educator, come in and talk to Dr. B. as he goes by, but he's doing some fantastic work.
I guess there's an additional question. Are there, with kind of the need for wraparound and mental health and all these other things, are there ways, are there funds, are there things out there for libraries to get involved at that level?
So I'm so glad you asked.
You didn't prep me or anything.
One thing, I will say that, you know, we are a COVID home test kit distributor. So we're one of 70 libraries in the state of Michigan that, on a monthly basis, gets a supply of test kits to give out. They go fast, like within three days. We're usually gone, and then we're waiting till the next month. As far as well-being and mental health, Bryce Bush and I recently went to a national conference, and much of the talk was on well-being and starting up health programs within libraries. And then some ARPA money that came through LSTA grant funding, went through, went to two co-ops in the, two library co-ops in Michigan, and they have purchased or allowed us to purchase additional eBooks strictly on job help, health, well-being, all of that. So and we will continue our programs. We did a whole series on teen suicide and depression. We will continue to do those, and once we have people coming back in, our programming will just shoot back up. So yes.
That's great. Mayor Prosser?
I'm good.
So one thing I will mention, just a reminder, that so fiscal year '23, the budget we're working on now is the last year that the voter-approved millage is in place. So when we ask for approval in fall, that will be for the '24 budget, which if it's not approved, which we were hoping it would be, would be, there would not be the budget. We would be reducing $1 million plus out of the budget of the library. So that's a very important and key item for council to put on the ballot, but also for the residents to consider that very important millage coming up.
Yeah, the library would be a shell of itself if we don't have both those millages.
Thank you, Kristen. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
And with that, we can take any questions. We have the materials in the packet for council, based on your questions. And then with that, that's the end of our presentations, just only for questions from council.
Can I ask a question of Tom, when I put him on the spot? And Director Hardy did this, because she's segregated over there by herself. And Director Hardy did this because she's segregated over there by herself. But looking at the line, the page on social service, economic development assistance and that part of it, and administration of it, I have thought of this for a long time in consideration of Dee and I having a bigger hand in this part of the game plan and basically the program's admission of this thing here. Does that align or have we considered having that be an element where Dee and I has more play in this, in the social service, economic development assistance arm?
I'd have to look at the line items to remember.
The stuff that's on like page 63, some of the stuff, the administration of.
Got it. Yep. E-HOP.
E-HOP, yeah. The stuff that's inside of E-HOP, the fall under housing and all the little grantee stuff that falls in there.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think we're definitely interested in exploring connection with DEI here. I think traditionally it's been an area where we have not had a lot of resources allocated just because of the other challenges in the budget. And then also the E-HOP program, although, you know, I think it's a really valuable tool to help attract talented people to work in East Lansing. It's kind of a difficult, it's a difficult ask right now to find a home to buy. So it's, it's something where, you know, it's come in ebbs and flows. We did, I think, two years ago, doubled the allocation. So it went from 5,000 to 10,000. And at that particular moment, we did have, I think, three that came through. So it is something that, you know, I think, I think bears merit to continue, especially as it relates to other, other strategic priorities that council related to employee engagement.
Yeah, and I think as well with the Human Rights Commission, I know stuff's coming through their agenda and mostly, I mean, everyone's on the same conversation around housing and that's probably going to be the next consecutive set of meetings. So just trying to thread that needle here a little bit better, not necessarily from a budgetary sense, but definitely from the conversations that we're having. I just wanted to put it on your radar.
Yep. So certainly I think, you know, in terms of the property on West Road, there's conversations right now percolating to the Planning Commission that may, may come to council with a recommendation ultimately to take another look at that area for housing. And if that is the council's desire, I think that, you know, there's probably interest in the marketplace, which gives us a chance to, you know, leverage in some of those opportunities for, you know, what's missing in the market right now or those opportunities that are missing. In terms of the Chesterfield money, I think that that provides us some opportunity to experiment in terms of what kind of financial tools may move the market and provide opportunities. You know, it's $300,000. It has certain restrictions based on the development agreement. But within that, I think, you know, the plan that we're hopefully finalizing, bringing to council soon, will have some of that flexibility built in if we can learn some things about what actually works to move the market. Maybe there's ways we can apply that in other parts of the city as well. So yes, I think there's lots of opportunity there.
All right. Well, it's on my mind. Just wanted to let you know so I don't sneak up on you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I actually have two questions for you, Tom.
Okay.
One question was on page five. Which line items are yours?
I can answer that. So page five, under public safety, you're going to see building permits and housing licenses and inspections. Those are both under Tom's purview. And then under community and economic development, both of those are under Tom's purview. And that would sum it up in the general fund.
Okay. And you might have gotten this question already, but since it's, you know, budgeting time and we can, you know, make it a part of the record, I was wondering, I heard, speaking of what Mayor Bacon brought up, that sometimes down payment assistance has been offered up to maybe like $30,000. And so I'm curious about, my question is, what it looks like to offer a down payment assistant program that matches what houses are going for in our area?
So I think that's something we can definitely talk about and probably maybe more appropriately as part of next week's, the CDBG, because that's where those, those funds are, come from. The council did recently up it from, I believe, 20 to 30. Yep. So, so that, you know, there's, there's been movement to try to increase the amount of the down payment assistance. And I think that's a direct, directly related to, you know, the context that you brought up, which is, you know, it's really, really a high, high threshold in terms of valuation. It's hard to find, you know, properties in that missing part of the market, you know, in the 150 to $250,000 range. Most of the stuff that gets built is, is quite a bit more than that. Most of the stuff that exists is quite a bit more than that. So covering that gap and having the low to moderate income qualification of the family, there's some disconnects there. So I think we can certainly talk more about that and, and, you know, council may want to experiment with, with raising that threshold to see what happens. My just sort of personal context is that it might be quite a bit more that we'd need to provide in terms of a down payment assistance to make the economics actually work. And then you get into questions of, you know, we have very limited funds, so is that too large of a subsidy for one family? And then questions of, you know, based on the, the numbers that exist, is that the, is that the most effective way to deal with the problem? Or is it in looking for opportunities to create some redevelopment opportunities that create economics, for instance, that, you know, the $30,000 level might work for? So big, big questions and things we think about a lot and things we welcome the conversation around.
Just anecdotally, I think with the low utilization, I think to make it more elastic, you'd probably do a percentage versus a dollar amount of net or something like along those lines. So that way you could, it would be more elastic to the market versus trying to kind of one-size-fits-all. But it would be more expensive, but there may be other things out there for that type of thing. So that it could be maybe a trade-off, but that could be something we could talk about down the road.
And again, the, I think, I feel like the Chesterfield money gives us the ability to experiment in a non-HUD universe where the regulations are, you know, pretty, pretty significant. So, so maybe the answer ultimately to this, to this down payment assistance question lies beyond HUD-type fund, funding and maybe some other types of money that could be available.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Counselperson Watson.
Thanks. Just two general questions. No, one is a back question, but the first one is the suggestion box on that page, on those pages. Who gets those?
Goes to our webmaster, so Michael Frye would get that. Communications, right?
I think it actually comes to Nicole Mosteller and myself.
Yeah. Do people?
We have never gotten a single suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of boxes. There's a lot of opportunity yet to say something.
I did test it and it does work. So I made a suggestion to myself, but we have never gotten one other than that one.
Did you take your own suggestion?
It's meant to test.
Thanks. And my other question, I believe Chief commented on, during our budgeting session, I believe he did, on the percentage of time that the police officer that comes to oversight spends on oversight. He, I feel like he has said like 50% of his time. And so I'm interested in what, you know, what is involved in that 50% of the, yeah. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. I would estimate that that time is at least 50%, if not more, of his daily activities. And it involves an array of things. First of all, Lieutenant Pride, who is the acting liaison for the Independent Police Oversight Commission, has to review every use of force that every officer in the city is involved in. That can range from a week where there's no uses of force, all the way up to like when we start getting in the fall football season where there could be 10 or 12 uses of force. Involved in that is not only just reading the police report, reading the, the original review by the on-duty supervisor, but also watching every video involved in that incident. And if that incident spans 10, 12, 15 minutes and there's five officers there, that could be a one-hour, two-hour review of just video on top of reading the report, making sure the video matches the report so we're doing our reports accurately, things of that nature. He also has to track a ton of data. If you read the Police Oversight Commission report, we have to track all of our interactions with juveniles, homeless individuals, all of our uses of force. We're also tracking an exorbitant amount of data when it comes to traffic stops. Given what we went through in 2020, we've initiated a lot of internal processes to make sure we have the data that gets requested of us by different entities. And so all of that stuff needs to be tracked, analyzed, compiled, reviewed, vetted, and then also put into documents to be shared. He also is attending every Independent Police Oversight Commission meeting. And with the advent of this job, he was moved to police administration, but with the deputy chief's vacancy, filling roles while he is up in police administration, he also observed a lot of new work. So he is trying to also do our hiring. So he has a good grasp on who's coming in this police department, what their qualifications are, with once again, an emphasis on diversity and things of that nature to make sure that we're keeping a lot of the things that we're really aiming for as an agency at the forefront of what those goals are for him.
And when you all change your systems, you know, your tracking systems, is that going to help with that person's time?
I don't believe so because a lot of it involves just a lot of manual person hours, essentially, just of watching, reviewing, answering questions. And inevitably, when he does send out those reviews, there were some times where he's gotten 60, 70, 80 questions back on some of them. So then he has to go through and vet all those questions so the members of the Oversight Committee get good thorough answers to the questions they have.
Okay. Well, if there's anything that can be helped with his time, I'm just open to hearing that or understanding that. I don't know if it's less attendance at the meetings or I don't know if it's, I don't know if things will get simpler at some point, but.
You know, our hope would be as, as we move through this transition, we become more efficient and more, more timely. And as the Police Oversight Commission gets to understand Lieutenant Pride and a little bit more about police work in nature in general, that some of those questions that he's having follow-up on, they'll understand through just constant, just information sharing and things like that. So it could streamline down a little bit, but I think it will always remain who's ever filling that role a, a major part of their duties.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
Thank you. More questions or comments? Anything else, George?
Nope. We can adjourn if council's ready and get ready for our next meeting. Take a short break.
All set. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.